Shall we start? This is a work session and we just have two items to go over. And I don't believe we need to call roll, correct Laura?
We do not need to call roll, although I am missing a couple of people still. Um, let's see here. Donna is the one board member that's missing. Anyone else that is missing? Let's see. Um, I'll send Teri a text. She's cabinet. Um, and Brendan and Patty. So I'll just touch base with them, but we can go on. Um, Donna's going to be here momentarily.
Okay. Great. All right, Rob, do you want to start?
I do, thanks Tina. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. Uh, two topics this evening. The first is a follow-up from a previous topic. Um, we'll be presenting some additional data in regards to law enforcement and SROs. And then a quick, um, update on Phase Two Plus and some innovative ideas that we're contemplating as we think about, um, how we're responding to this pandemic. So I'm not sure if it's Rob or Jonathan that's going to kick us off with our first presentation. So, um, Rob, Jonathan? Landon? Mike?
Rob, I'll go ahead and kick us off. And, uh, well, good evening, everyone. Um, so we have, we have some data to share from Jonathan, but I'm going to let Landon speak a little bit also. Uh, we're excited. We, we do have membership for the Equity Council. We can talk about that later if you want. But, uh, at this point, we do have some data to share that we thought we would, we'd give you as scheduled on, on our work sessions of this week. So Landon, I'll let you go.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, Mike. Uh, good evening, members of the board. I hope everyone's having a wonderful week. Um, I just, uh, really excited. Want to thank Jonathan for putting together this data and information based on some additional requests and perspectives that you, I think you've requested. Um, I'm also happy at this point, or later in the presentation, to kind of give an overview of the membership of the kind of demographic and stakeholder breakdown that we had from the Equity Council. So I can do that really briefly right now and then hand it over to Jonathan. Maybe that's the, I'm seeing Rob nod a little bit. Is that cool? Okay.
That sounds great, Landon.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to share, uh, a few things here with you all, uh, as we jump right in. Uh, can you all see my screen projecting?
Yep, we can see it.
Great. Um, so as a reminder, what we're doing here with the Equity Council, our first meeting is tomorrow. We have, uh, 40 members. We're really excited. Uh, our top first topic will be the SROs, but we've gone over with you with that multiple times. As you remember, we recruited folks three distinct ways. One was a, a specific group of folks from, uh, selected by, uh, the district and the board. Another was a random selection of families in outreach and then open recruitment, uh, of the broader BVSD community. Um, our, our final number is 40 members of the council. Initially, I think I told you, I think last week or the week before, that we were looking at around 30, but the interest was so great and the passion from the BVSD community was just so enormous. We really felt a responsibility to enlarge, enlarge in the group, to, uh, get some of that additional passion, energy in. Um, and you can see the diverse spectrum of folks who are a part of, uh, the group. A lot of parents, uh, a lot of parents with additional roles in the community, parents of special education, students, um, teachers, uh, principal, school administrator, uh, you know, eight students and three teachers. So a wide set of folks who represent vital stakeholder groups in the Boulder Valley community. Uh, this is a snapshot of the demographic breakdown, um, of the Equity Council. You can see also a really powerful, uh, cross-section of different backgrounds and identities from across Boulder Valley. Um, American Indian, Alaska native, uh, folks who identify as BIPOC, um, uh, folks who are, uh, are black, folks who are Latino, folks who share multiple demographics, um, and across the entire spectrum. So, um, I think-
Landon, your slides aren't updating, so we can see your screen, but you never put it in present mode, so if you're forwarding your slides, it, it hasn't moved from the first slide that you spoke to.
Oh, I'm so sorry about that, guys. Is this, can you see this now?
Yeah, that's better.
Sorry about that. I'm just, you know, I got the first thumbs up and I just started charging right in. Apologies. Um, so this is the, uh, the demographic breakdown. Apologies for that, uh, that lag there. And then the previous slide I was referring to is the spectrum of different stakeholder roles folks have across, uh, the BVSD community. So, um, I really want to thank, uh, uh, all the folks from BVSD. Also, a special shout out to Randy Barber and his team for the communications work. Um, this full list of all the names of folks who have signed up for the board, along with this stakeholder role and demographic role information is now posted to the website. You can see the URL right below. So if folks are interested in digging into some of that, uh, information, they can totally go straight to the website to find that. Um, uh, just as a reminder, we're going to be doing a lot to keep the folks in the loop who, who, uh, applied but did not make it onto the council, um, including some of the things we shared with you last time. But this is just a quick reminder of the work we're going to be doing around emailing them, keeping them involved in discussion, presenting opportunities for them to engage and so forth. As a reminder, our first meeting is tomorrow. We're going to be spending some time on, uh, personal stories, vision of success, and a charge from the superintendent and Mike to really kind of launch the group to that conversation about how to build community and think about equity overall. Um, and then today, we're here, uh, at 9:15, uh, this idea of the SRO and discipline data, which is a part of our board engagement next steps over the course of, uh, September and October. So with that, unless there are any questions for me on what I just presented, I'm going to hand it over to Jonathan Dings.
But Landon, before, before we turn it over, board members, um, are there any questions in regards to what Landon presented?
I, I just need some clarification, Rob. Uh, on the list of, uh, participants, you had the BIPOC and then you have a bunch of folks that are people of color. I'm, I'm trying to figure out why, but why that one particular individual was just, uh, identified as BIPOC. I, I don't understand that one piece.
So, you know, BIPOC is, uh, a group of people, Black Indigenous, person of color. Um, and one of the things that was really important to us, uh, member Garcia, is that we identify people based on how they identified themselves to us in the application, and that's how that person identified.
Thanks, that, that explains it. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
Kitty?
Yes, I'm just wondering, will, will Landon's slides be on board docs so we can go back and look at them? Great, thank you.
I'll share with Laura right away.
Anything else? Hi Donna.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much, Landon, for your leadership and partnership in the, in these efforts. So excited that we've been able to get, uh, so many of our community members engaged in our Equity Council, um, and, and also, um, having strategies for so many of those that have applied, um, to also continue to stay engaged. Do you want to speak to that for just a moment real quick before we turn it over to Jonathan? Cause I know that many of the board members and others in the public with such an outpouring of support and interest, um, how can we, how can we capitalize on this and make sure that everybody who's involved can continue to, to stay part of the conversation?
Thanks for that, Superintendent Anderson. You know, uh, I've worked with a lot of districts, uh, who have attempted to do something like this. I've never seen such an outpouring of support and interest. And I just want to name that that's an incredible resource and dedication. Um, and the notes from people, uh, cheering us on even if they didn't get in or asking some good critical questions to follow up. You know, I just want to again applaud Randy for his follow-up individually with all those folks and his team. Um, one of the first things we asked everyone to do is to submit a video to us of what equity means to them. And, uh, we're going to be collecting those videos and those stories and, uh, putting some of that together to make it available for the Equity Council so that people can use that as great data to learn from over the course of the project. Um, they're also going to be an opportunity for them to weigh in on the recommendation set as we get closer. Um, and we're also going to have a chance to share about their experiences with SROs. Um, and then, you know, one of the things that's really critical, uh, is that the Equity Council will have an opportunity to think through what also, what they want to see in terms of engaging with that group. Um, you know, we don't want to direct that. We want that to be an opportunity to co-create with this incredible group of people.
And I'll just add in, um, that, uh, in addition, you know, we have set up, uh, Let's Talk, so letstalk.bvsd.org. Uh, we'll be, um, going in and putting the folks that had applied, um, into that tool so that they can do the work that Landon was mentioning. But we also want to encourage any community members to join in as well. Um, you know, people may have, may not have, uh, gotten their application in on time or hadn't thought that they, you know, were ready to, to participate fully in the committee, but we want to encourage everyone in the community to participate. And in that way, if they also register and connect to that specific, uh, area in, in our engagement tool, that they will get updates in there. We're committed to making sure that things like the, the slide deck from tonight and, um, you know, updates from the meetings are in there as well.
Excellent. Thank you all so much. Um, and with that, Jonathan, now I think we're, we're ready to turn the presentation over to you to, um, share with the board and, and our community, some of the additional data points that they were interested in. So Jonathan Dings.
Thank you. President Markless, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. Um, I'm going to share my screen here and, uh, we will, uh, go, go over some additional information, uh, that was, uh, that was based on the, the questions that, that you all had at our past meeting. Oops. Well, that's annoying. Let's try this again. Okay. So, um, what, what the, so the topics that we'll, we'll touch on are the ones we, I could answer using data that I have available. Uh, one was a request for a comparison with other districts. We have a comparison with a couple that are similar to us. There was a request for some comparison within Boulder Valley to see what we have there. Uh, and then, uh, we will examine some of the drug-related incidents data and contextualize that within the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey data that we've recently received a week and a half ago or so. Um, and then, while I won't, won't want to belabor it, I would like to at least mention what the limitations are of data generally, uh, and relative to one of the questions that were asked around special education, uh, and, uh, data there for students who, in their interactions with school resource officers. So to give you an idea of the kind of data that we're going, going to use, we're going to work with the same kind of data that we worked in, in much of the past, which is local law enforcement annually reports data, uh, for House Bill 12, 13, 45, uh, that is, uh, that is gathered annually. Uh, we have the two most recent years of data available for two districts we're comparing with from the Colorado Department of Justice website. Um, and for consistency with the past presentation, I'm going to just compare with the three years of BVSD data that we have, which are gathered up from local law enforcement agencies who generously provided the, the data for, for us, enabled us to clean it up a little bit. Um, and, uh, really appreciate that, but the comparison is this kind of a comparison. Um, the general idea is that we'll be comparing demographics of tickets and arrests received by students, as indicated in the records that we have or that are on this Department of Justice website mentioned above, and comparing that with the population of students. So as an example of this, we would say that Black students receive 5.3% of tickets and arrests in Boulder Valley, but make up only 1% of the population. So that's a difference of 4.3 percentage points. So what a perfectly proportional system would look like is the next, uh, slides I would show you would all show zeros. So, uh, comparing with a couple other districts that are similar to us in size and demographics, uh, we would see, uh, that, that we have a, a substantial looking difference in terms of, uh, the, the proportionality, uh, of, of arrests and tickets for our students who are Black. Uh, um, and that that substantial proportionality issue exists in a way that does not exist in the other two districts that we're looking at here. The, the, the plot here, the gold bar to the left is the 4.3 that I, I mentioned just on the previous, previous slide. Um, we would also note that we have proportionality concerns with regard to the, the Latino students. Uh, and, and that, uh, while those are similar to one of the districts that we have, uh, compared with here, uh, they're not as similar with the other. And in any case, these are numbers that are, uh, indicating a lack of proportionality. For some context on these, uh, numbers, uh, if, if our data for Black students had been proportional, we would have had 23 less occasions of a student getting, uh, a ticket or an arrest who happened to be Black, uh, and, and would have been, um, you know, identified in some other group instead. That's what it would have taken for that, that number to be as, as zero in, in these particular data over the three, three years that we're looking at. And, and about 50 Latino students, 50 fewer students identified as Latino would have needed to get a ticket or be arrested and would have needed to be identified in some, some other group instead. So just to give you an idea of the magnitude of those numbers as context for, for this work. Uh, but overall, we would say that we have concerns for both Black and Latino students in this area and that our concern for Black students is not like what we see in two other neighboring, uh, two other, uh, demographically similar, possibly neighboring and possibly not districts. Um, we also look within the regions of Boulder Valley, uh, divided up by the police departments that serve them. So going, going, going from east, east to west, we have Broomfield, Lafayette, Lewisville, City of Boulder, and then the remainder of, of the district being Boulder County. And, and that, uh, so the Boulder County Sheriff's Office in that case. Uh, so not even needing to know, um, which of these five regions are, are which, which I will plan to review with schools, uh, next week in a, a meeting and improve, uh, and make any improvements to the data that needed after that. Uh, we would see that the, the, that the disproportionality issue with regard to Black students, um, uh, exists pretty much across Boulder Valley and that there's no one region where we would say, uh, there, there is, uh, uh, a lack of concern for disproportionality for Black or, 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 or the, or the, or the Black and Latino students. Um, we, we have one region we might ask a little bit about, uh, the promising that the purple bar for the Latino students is, is, uh, is, is it on the negative side rather than the positive side? Um, we, we, we will ask about that a little bit more to understand it more, but, uh, but I wouldn't say that we have one region in Boulder Valley that is, um, completely driving the concerns that we have, uh, in, in the, uh, as we're, uh, look, looking at these data further. Um, we, we will seek to understand more what's going on behind these patterns, knowing of course that we have to be a little cautious. Uh, we have to be a little cautious because these are just served by different police departments, uh, that report to different elected officials. Uh, so there may be some difference in how policing happens within these, uh, regions also with regard to the specific kinds of offenses that high school age, so typical age for this to occur, students are likely to do. Finally, um, in terms of, uh, a slide, we were asked also to, to look at differences in tickets and arrests related to drugs and alcohol. Um, and, and where we have context for the, this and the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey data will be for our Latino and white, white, um, uh, high school students. We, that's a sampling-based survey, so we do not have enough data typically for Black students to have data on that one. Having mentioned that, we would denote that there is some disproportionality for Black students, uh, and it appears to be a little greater for alcohol than, than for marijuana or a combined category that combines all drug and alcohol-related charges, uh, which include alcohol and marijuana and a couple others that are not as prominent, uh, in the, in the data that we see. Um, when we look at our white and our, 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 our Latino data, we would see that overall, there's not an indication of disproportionality particularly for our, our, our Latino students in terms of drug and alcohol, it's arrests. Um, what we would, would see however, is that there is appreciably less, uh, for, for the, the Latino students with regard to alcohol and more for, for white. There, there is an item on the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey that speaks to this, a couple items actually. Um, there is an item that would suggest that our, uh, white students use alcohol, um, at least they, they self-report the use of alcohol substantially more than our, 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 our Latino students. Um, so there is some consistency here perhaps with the data that we have. Now we, again, we, we don't know exactly because we have to, uh, in terms of digging into these, but it seems likely though that one of the other items on the survey might more directly speak to this question because it speaks to using drugs or alcohol before or during school. Um, that's, that's, that's one where in contrast, uh, there's, uh, slightly more of that reported by, by the Latino than white students. Um, so as we look, look at these data, there is some consistency and, uh, some, some not with the data that we see here. Um, finally, in terms of the limitations, uh, so there've been questions asked about the interactions of school resource officers with students. Uh, and, and the challenge that, that I have of course in looking at data is the only data that, that is recorded in this regard, uh, is instances where a ticket or a summons are issued, is issued or an arrest is made. Um, that, that's a limitation on all the interactions that a school resource officer is, uh, likely to have with, with students over the course of the day. Um, and that with regard to these data, uh, we, we generally would lack individual student information so that we, we can't match either to our, our database, uh, right? In which case we would, would need to be able to do in order to answer questions like, what's the relationship to special education, uh, in terms of the relationships that we're seeing here about, uh, so we can't match demographics in that way. We have another minor limitation also, which is that demographics we are provided in these are provided by police departments and may be gathered a little bit differently than what we have. This is not a huge limitation, only one, uh, to be, you know, exercise some caution in looking at how precisely we, we, we have the match here. I don't seem to see a multi-racial category among, uh, what, what I'm seeing out of, uh, police departments, assuming I'm, uh, uh, looking at the data and that, whereas that is a category we have in Boulder Valley. But that's a minor limitation compared to this other one more generally. Your questions?
Okay, thank you so much. Um, let's start with Richard. Do you have any questions?
Uh, I'm still trying to understand the, the, the graph. So when you look at the, the, uh, the graph, let's look at the last one that you touched on where you have the bar graph and then you have the Latinos in, uh, that are, I guess they're, is that negative? Uh, I'm trying to understand what that-
Right, yeah. Right, great. So, so the, so whereas a positive bar would indicate over-representation in tickets and arrests, uh, a, a bar that, that, that goes negative as this one does here would indicate an under-representation in arrests. So of all the, sorry, tickets and arrests. So of all the tickets and arrests that are issued for alcohol, um, uh, there are, looks like about 13% fewer as, as the percentage of all those tickets is for Latino students than is the percentage of, of Latino students Boulder Valley-wide.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, um, the, and the slide before that, we're looking at the regions. Are, are we going to learn who, what region one is, region two, region three? Um, I'm really interested in knowing who that region five is, uh, as related to Latino. Do we know? Are we, are we, are we going to get that information? I, I don't know.
I, I, my, my aim is to work with schools on these data first and then once, um, I have, uh, greater confidence in our understanding of the, the patterns, then, um, we would figure out the way to provide the information in a manner that will, um, not risk identifying any particular students individually.
I see what you're saying. Okay, so if, uh, if there's only a few tickets, let's say, uh, people can kind of guess who they are, is that what you're saying?
Yep, uh, and that that would be an issue more for the populations we have that are basically smaller.
Hmm, okay. Well, if, if we can kind of guess who they are, I guess we could find out what happens to these kids once they get tickets, right? I mean, I, that's my concern is that once they get tickets, then what happens to these particular kids? Are they on a path to commit more crimes? I mean, what's, what's happening with them? That's what I want to find out from this Equity Council. I, I think the information is great, but I, you know, what, uh, what is the outcome of kids getting tickets and kids getting summons and kids going to court and are they ending up in jail? Are they on a track to this prison, the school to prison pipeline? That's, that's where I want to get to.
Thank you, Richard, for that. Um, and Jonathan, uh, you, you and I can certainly talk further about this. I'm just unclear as to how we would, would track that down, Richard, in the, in, um, having the ability to do that. Um, Jonathan and I can certainly talk about that, though. I'm, I'm just struggling on how we would, we would figure that out.
Yeah, right. I mean, our basic challenge is not knowing who the students are, um, typically. Uh, so, um, that, that's a, a piece of it.
Okay. And then I'm assuming we'll talk about the, just sort of the trajectory of what happens through the ticketing. Maybe there's some kind of flow that we can do about what that looks like, just from, you know, from a staff referral to an officer, to the different pathways that a student might experience? And then what are the various outcomes that we see, like some kind of thing like that? Is that, assuming that will happen at a later time?
I'm sorry Tina, I'm, I'm trying to follow along. So you're talking about, you trying to talk about the relationship between, um, you know, because in previous presentations, uh, what Jonathan has shared, um, is, is that many of these tickets are, are, um, start actually from the school staff to the, to the ticket, right? Um, and then after the ticket, to the extent everybody who gets tickets, what happens to them, I think is what Richard was, was kind of asking. If you, if you, you know, you know, if you could, if you could boil this down, if, if you get a ticket or a summons, um, or arrested in high school, to the extent, um, where we could figure out what is the likelihood, uh, then that you would end up, um, uh, with recidivism within, um, within the court system, um, something along those lines. But what you're talking about Tina is the flow of the relationship. I'm, I'm trying to, trying to follow along.
I think at some point, just following up on what Richard's saying, just to get sort of an end-to-end idea of what the experience is. And also to maybe talk about, I would ask for the interactions between SROs that don't result in tickets as well. So we learned a little bit about that, but, um, seeing what, you know, what they're doing, I think would be helpful. Kathy?
I just would reiterate what you said Tina. I think knowing the start as well, like you said, staff referrals and kind of how the whole process starts will be, will give us a better picture of the whole thing.
Okay, Donna?
Um, I do have a couple of questions, um, and, and maybe it's just my, uh, chart, the way I'm reading the chart, but look at chart three. Um, if you bring- If you bring that up, and then three.
Page three, so by.
The next, no, one before that, no, page, chart three.
This one?
Okay. On that one, on the bullet where it says compare demographics of tickets and arrests with population. And now let's scroll to chart seven. So chart seven on that bullet two is, they seem to contradict each other. We can't, we don't have the demographics. The other ones were comparing it and then it's, can you explain that?
Yes, yes. We, what we have as far as the demographics for summonses and arrests are the demographics reported by the arresting agency or the ticket issuing agency. So we have data, but what we can't do is match that data at a kid-by-kid basis to any data that we would have. We can look at what our population is overall. We can look at what the demographics is reported by the police departments are for students who are ticketed or given or arrested. But what we can't, we can't pull that into any of our database particularly to match, to get other categories that the police department wouldn't know about, like special education was an example in one of the questions, or free-to-do lunch status or that.
Okay, and another thought that I had, and it's not necessarily a question, but, and maybe it is a question, that can we solve in, like, social interaction? But there's so much information lacking as to the root cause of what's causing the disciplinary actions. And who, we know who it starts with, and the SRO officer, I believe, told us that usually more of it is a teacher being, the SRO being called in. But when we go to the root cause, I read something today that Barack Obama said when he was Senator, and it really hit, it got to me. It said, "We know that more than half of all black children live in single-parent households," a number that had doubled, doubled, he said, "double twice since we were children." We know the statistics that children who grow up without a father are five times more likely to live in poverty and commit crime, nine times more likely to drop out of schools, and 20 times more likely to end up in prison. So I am concerned, not only about the relationships, or is it, is this a pipeline from school, but what is the root cause and can we hit that as a society? I spoke with two teachers today that talked about the incidences at their school that started with interaction with an AP to bring in consequences where there was a theft reported and one was drug alcohol abuse. And what interested me about the conversation that I had with these teachers was that they felt that the tickets were a good thing because it was an early interaction that stopped the consequences, that if it had just been a slap on the hand on some of these major violations, that the kiddos would, it would almost be positive reinforcement for a negative behavior. And so I appreciate you answering these questions, but it still brings up a lot of thought-provoking things for me of actually what's happening in the school, but really at home and in the community and a deeper root cause. Thank you.
Hey, Kitty?
Yes. I just have one question because you mentioned that the only thing we know is about the kids who actually got tickets or were arrested. Is there a way we can, say, poll the kids and just ask who's had an interaction with an SRO and then have a couple of questions about the quality of that interaction and see if that would give us some interesting information?
Okay.
Just to respond to that, Kitty, I hear what you're, you know, the information you're trying to gather, and maybe there's a way we can do that. You'd want to make sure that you'd validate that, you know, somebody saying something happened actually happened. I think that that creates the potential for the information not to be accurate if you ask that question. I think that Jonathan and I can think about that. I think that, you know, the theme that I'm hearing from board members is that there's, you know, that there's a lot of concern. I think we all share the concern that when we look at our data, it's disproportionate, especially with arrests. And then, you know, I think that, you know, from Richard's question, from Kitty's question and others, you know, to the extent that the SRO either could have prevented some of these things from happening or exasperated the situation, I think that that's, you know, at the crux of what folks are trying to ask in different ways. Jonathan, are you hearing a similar theme? Am I processing this correctly?
Yeah, no, that we would like to have more information than we have about a pattern that, that over and over again concerns us and is the same kind of pattern that we see in other data. Data around even attendance, dropout, achievement data, I mean, and anything we can do to help get, bring more context onboard, knowing that we've got some real limitations when we're not in person. And we'd be asking people about interactions they might have had in early March of 2020. I think we're unfortunately not in a position to do any meaningful survey work, in my estimation, immediately.
Now, one thing that made me think of it was the SRO who came and spoke to us at our board meetings and talked about a lot of positive interactions that he had had with students and their families. And it would just be interesting for me to see if we could get that information from the families as well. Not, I mean, not saying, "We know he talked to you," but just information to the community about the quality of interactions with SROs.
Is that it, Kitty?
Yeah, I just, another thing is we hear about the negative ones. So it would be interesting to see if there are positive ones to be reported.
Lisa?
Don, I may have misunderstood you, but in case I didn't, I just want to be clear that single-parent households don't cause criminal behavior, but that's.
I was just reading Barack's quote.
Okay.
And I just quoted him directly out of what I read today. It was a quote, not my, it's not my statement, it was a quote from him.
Well, we definitely had a so-called war on drugs that caused single-parent households, and I think that same over police thing is what leads to school to prison pipeline today. Jonathan, I had, I think, two things. One, when I look at the drug chart, and I think about my time as a high school teacher, I feel like white students are much more comfortable talking about drug and alcohol use in front of authority figures and using drugs and alcohol in front of authority figures, et cetera. I wonder if we have any way to hear more about what kinds of behaviors led to those tickets and arrests? Was, you know, in what cases was somebody asked to put away a bottle of vodka five times before being sent to the principal's office versus in what cases was a random lock or sweep done and something was turned up or other things of that nature? To understand sort of maybe more about those, sorry, fly, more about those statistics.
Right. So I think the, that would be the kind of question that we may be able to engage schools on in terms of, help us understand these data, help us understand what leads to the circumstances that we have. I suspect that some of those are questions for legal to answer around policy and which things that occur are things that folks in schools understand that they must act on and that the prescribed action in Boulder Valley has been specifically to call for a ticket. I'm not the expert in what those things are, but legal may be able to speak to which are the things that we've given our staff no choice on, or maybe not we've given, but the legal system has given no choice on, and which things are ones that might or might not, and what would cause something to lead to a ticket or not.
Okay. And I'm curious, I understand what you're saying about limitations on SED data, but I guess I'm wondering what the solutions are. How are we going to be talking about SED interactions and finding out more information given the limitations on the data that we have?
Well, I mean, the part of me that wishes to gather data really well and accurately would want to, we'll wait until we're back in person and we can ask people to monitor that and actually study it in a way that, as opposed to, what we'd be, what we're really limited to at this point is asking people to recall things that happened a long time ago. So we really are a little hamstrung on some of these important qualitative questions.
Well, I guess I would suggest that I didn't know that it's just memory. We have a variety of folks who are taking contemporaneous notes when they're working with our students, right? And when I'm talking to folks at our CASA program and in VEST and in GAL and in a variety of other roles where folks interact with our SED students, they often have detailed and complicated notes about things going back for years concerning everything that goes on with the students they interact with, including law enforcement data. So I'm hoping that we can take the opportunity to maybe work with some of the agencies around us to pull some of that information. I'm a little worried about trying to push past it, given the number of concerns I heard specifically about this population and the number of stories from parents and from students and from folks in any of these organizations about incidents that had occurred that were egregious.
Just a follow-up question, Jonathan, to that, right? As we're thinking about the data that we're looking at from law enforcement, right? Like, they would not have record of a child's IEP. That's not part of their process, right? And then when we think about our records, we don't necessarily keep information in our records when students are arrested or not, do we? Like, so I guess, Lisa, to answer your question, it's each information is housed in a different place, so it would take some cross-referencing potentially. I don't know, let's think about that, Jonathan, to the extent that we could dig into the impact. And then just going back to, of those arrests of students with special needs, to what extent did those stem from adults in schools, right? Or did they stem from some other type of situation? So I think that complicated, I don't know that it's impossible, but definitely complicated.
Thanks, Rob. I think the concerns I heard too were not just about arrests, but were about SROs being in meetings where they didn't belong, about IEP students, variety of IEP meetings or discussions about whether a student's behavior was related to their IEP or not, that SROs were often present and giving their opinion in those cases in several of our schools. I understand the data is difficult to get, but I feel like if we're going to have these conversations about whether SROs are working, that the interactions they're having with our SED students and the degree to which they're becoming involved with our IEP plan feels pretty important.
It does, no, I think that it's certainly something that we need to consider, think through. Why, either do we not have policies that restrict that or do our policies encourage that or are policies being broken? You know, how is that coming to be? Might be a way for us to kind of dig into, to what extent is that happening? I know that you're hearing from these agencies and they're seeing that, right? But from a systemic point of view, you know, when those things are happening, why are they happening? To what frequency are they happening? Do we know that they're happening? And if we do know that they're happening, what are we doing about them? That may be the, from a systemic point, a place for us to dig in and be able to provide better answers and brighter clarity for the board on what's actually happening.
Lisa, do you have other questions? Okay, Stacy? Okay, yeah, thank you, Jonathan, for putting this together. And I feel like we are going to get more information along the way. Curious to see kind of where we, where this all goes. And I know we have the Equity Council meeting tomorrow, and I'll be interested in hearing what other community members have to say and what their inputs will be. And ultimately, for me, the goal is just to make sure that however a child is, whenever a child has a behavioral issue and whoever notices it, whether it's an SRO or a member of staff or, you know, maybe a partner in the community, that we find a way to direct the student so that they can have a successful outcome that's not punitive, that's not permanent on the record, so that we're doing everything we can to set them up for future success, not to be punishing people and lowering their self-esteem when they might be lower already. So that's kind of where I am on this. Anyway, so this was great. Any other further questions? If you have questions also upon reflection, you can always email Rob and let him know if you have any other thoughts. Is that, is that all we had on this topic today?
Tina, before you leave the topic, I just want to ask for tomorrow's meeting, are we allowed to be at that particular meeting tomorrow? Are we invited or what's the story on that? I mean, can we participate in it or not participate or at least listen?
Yes, I'll let Mike answer that, but no, we have posted all of the meetings with the, in the event that any and all board members wanted to participate, so there's no limitations there, but I'll let Mike answer that.
Yes, Richard, all board members are welcome. And to the extent, tomorrow's agenda will really be about getting to know who the council members are, telling their stories, things of that nature. Landon, do we have anything else that we're doing in terms of giving information out or anything like that? Because I know we're going to summarize those meetings and we're going to put them in our website, but anything else to add, Landon?
No, that's totally right. We're going to share stories, we can do a wrap-up, we can send a note out to the board members and kind of keep you in the loop. And we, of course, welcome you to come and listen into the conversations.
Great, appreciate that.
Yes, Tina, that was my question. You don't mean participate, Rob, you mean listen.
Yeah, thank you for correcting me, yes. No, not participating, but being able to listen and see what's happening.
Great, well, I'm looking forward to it. All right, we have another topic if we're ready to move on, which is part of the 2.5 phase of developing a larva.
Thanks, Tina. So this next topic I'm incredibly excited about, you know, as everyone knows, as board members as you know, and as I hope our community knows, we are spending hours upon hours of staff's time focusing with our working advisory group to finalize our Phase 2.5 recommendations for you all as we work to get all kids back into some type of in-person learning. And I just want to commend our team and our committee, our working advisory committee, they've just done an amazing job and they've been working incredibly hard and it's not easy, very complicated, lots of competing priorities, but I really believe in the process that we've adopted. And if I, I believe that if you do things the right way, the end result is going to be something that you can stand behind and is going to be able to put us in the best position. So very excited about that. And again, board members and community, you'll hear a final update next Tuesday. The update that you're going to be hearing today is a bit of an innovation. And I would say that, you know, when you're in a crisis and leading through a crisis such as the pandemic, one of the hardest things to be able to do is to be able to, when you're in the midst of a crisis, be able to look beyond what's in front of your face, what you're dealing with in the moment, and begin to contemplate the future and begin to think about ways that we could, can innovate. And I know that most of our focus and the focus of our community is how do we get back to the way we were? But I think that we have to come to some realizations that the way we were wasn't working for a lot of our kids and it may not work for us once we're on the other side of when the pandemic begins to subside. So we have been thinking about what has happened in our community as COVID-19 began to ramp up and how many folks within our community have reacted, whether it's opting for homeschooling or for learning pods. And we really, about a month, a month to a month and a half ago, began to try to put our heads together around what could be some strategies we could think about that would learn from that, would react from that. that would, would learn from that, would react from that and, and be able to provide some, some equitable innovations from the district's perspective as well. And so we're very lucky to have Emily Pootz working with us, many board members, you know Emily for our community. Emily has just an incredible track record as an education leader, has a district-based leader consultant, and so Emily is a member of our community, has been working with us, has been engaging a lot of our parents who have been, been thinking outside of the box when, in solving educational, the needs for their own kids. So has been taught, has she's been talking with some of our parents that are in pods or have decided to do homeschooling and has come up with what I think is, is an incredibly innovative vision for us to begin to explore.
Rob, we can't hear you.
Hello?
You were muted for quite a bit.
Should I take it from the top? I guess it's a million dollar question. Tina, help me, where did I, where did you, where did I leave off? Hopefully it was somewhere well after hello.
We were, we were just learning about our families that were learning pottying and homeschooling and wondering what we could do from there.
Okay, so, you know, in a, in a nutshell, we're really trying to not only focus on solving the, the, the issue at hand, which is getting kids in person, but also thinking of innovative solutions that'll work for families where that may not work now, now or even after the pandemic. And so this concept of microschools, which I think is a, is a really cool innovative concept, is something we've been exploring and Emily has been taking the lead on that for us. I'm guessing you didn't hear me brag about Emily's credentials as well and, and why we're luck, so lucky to have her. She's got a great track record of success, both in public education, in the charter sector and as a consultant. And so I'm going to stop talking before I freeze again and I'm going to turn the presentation over to Emily. Emily?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson and members of the board. It's great to see you again. I'm hoping my screen doesn't freeze. We've had some internet issues on and off here in Niwot, but hopefully that won't be the case tonight. And it's, it's good to see you all. I was just thinking about the last time I was with you was still 2020. And yet it feels as though years have passed since that, that was the case. So anyway, it's just been a privilege to get to collaborate with the district team and leadership and super impressed by the extraordinary work that's happening right now, really across the system. Just so many people going the extra mile. So, so it's a privilege to be a part of that. And as Dr. Anderson mentioned, you know, we've been conscious of this idea that during times of disruption and tumult, there's also an opportunity for thinking creatively. And if you think about it, in many ways, remote learning is of itself a disruption. This is something we haven't really done before and everyone's learning each day, what are the best ways to serve kids? And so I think microschools fit into that same category in some ways. So I'm going to share my screen here and dig into how we're thinking about this right now. Can everyone see that? Thumbs up if you can see it. No? No go? Thumbs up? Oh gosh. Can you all see it? No?
We can see it now, Emily.
Now we can see it, yeah.
Perfect, awesome. All right, can someone just flag me if something goes south so I know and I won't keep talking? So, so as, so this idea of microschools, we're going to kind of, I think this model could serve BVSD really well. So I probably don't need to share all the current challenges that I think systems everywhere are facing. Most of these are not unique to Boulder, but at a super high level, I think this global pandemic has forced us all to rethink, in K-12 anyway, and higher ed, teaching and learning. And it's forced families, jobs and how they support learning, it's been kind of an upheaval at a really gigantic scale while everyone's working hard to figure out solutions. And during that process, we've recognized that not everyone needs the same thing. And even within demographic groups, as we've been exploring this question, even within demographic groups, people are preferring and needing different kinds of supports. And then, of course, the sheer number of students, the scale that are, of students served in BVSD can sometimes make finding small solutions complex. And in addition to that, we know synchronous learning is working for some and it's extremely challenging for others, being online all day. And then, of course, there's worries that abound around gaps in learning for some students and some too much screen time. We've heard from others, questions around engagement and motivation at the high school level, can we keep kids in school? And then, and then the dilemma that all districts are facing around it all, how do we, how do we hold on to our students and families and do everything we can to kind of meet their needs? So this question of what is a microschool and why now? Microschool is not a new idea. It's been around for around a decade or so, but of course, micro meaning small, small school. You may have heard of schools like Acton Academy, which originated in Texas, the Wildflower Schools are across the Midwest. NOLA, microschools, has been a really interesting model in New Orleans. And they vary in size, somewhere between five and 150 students. In BVSD, we're going to be looking at the, at the very small end of this. So as we were kind of contemplating a path forward to test some new ideas and potentially bring some new solutions into the community, we began to look at the challenges that I just listed and asked this question, what, what is a potential solution for families who are concerned about exposure and teachers who potentially are, wow, look like if we create an option that could serve them? So microschool is a mixed age community generally, about, in our case, we're going to say six to 10 students that are paired with a learning guide. The advantage of mixed age, of course, is they get to learn with and from each other. We know kids don't progress on any continuum in lockstep, so there's really this opportunity to work together and learn from each other. They're intentionally small, quote, individualized learning, and they're very nimble and responsive. So when you're working with a small community of students, it's easier for a learning guide to shift course quickly when there's, when there's a need for that. They utilize primarily mastery-based or competency-based technologies, which means that students are engaged with technology but in a self-paced learning format. So students are online, learning at a pace that works for some students are ready to move forward quicker and other students need some additional support on concepts. But what mastery-based learning ensures is that there aren't big holes in students' learning and that we're able to really understand and narrow and focus our interventions on the disconnects in student understanding. I'm happy to go into that deeper more if folks are interested, but I just wanted to kind of touch upon that, that in most microschools, they're using some kind of mastery-based or competency-based technology. And as a result of that, the role of the teacher or the guide shifts to really more of a facilitator of learning. And so as I mentioned, for, they're freed up in a variety of ways. So they're not writing assessments or giving assessments. Assessments are all generated through the technology and through the system, but they're responding to how students are performing. And so it saves a bunch of time from our planning, implementation perspective, and it also allows teachers to kind of get to some of the creative collaborative work that they often want to do, but sometimes don't feel like they have the time to engage in. In addition, it promotes student autonomy and a sense of personal responsibility for learning. Students in the, in the model we're, we're looking at set goals every morning as part of, and declare those goals to the other members of their community and then reflect on their capacity to achieve those goals at the end of the day, which is a 21st century skill that often gets missed and is invaluable in every single workplace environment. Finally, we capture that student data and this is the piece that I'm really excited about is being able to track student progress. And, and I think the additional opportunity is really being able to leverage community experts and partners, of course, in a COVID-safe way, but being able to connect into some of the really remarkable work happening through our community partners and out in the community because of the time that's freed up to do other things, other learning endeavors with students. So one more, and so I wanted to just touch on two things. The first is really this idea of how innovation works. And one of the challenges I've experienced in my career comes to innovating inside of large districts, is that it's a system forward on anything fast. It takes a long time to do training and professional development and to then learn if it's working. You can think of like curriculum adoptions and other kinds of district-wide adoptions. And yet what we know about innovation is it's best tested in small batches, we're able to iterate and learn quickly from what's working and not working and make adjustments to really get to the best version of what this model can look like. And so the opportunity is really how can we do this in a small way and test the students' needs that we're able to meet through this model and adapt quickly as, as needed. And then, second of all, I've been really excited to hear about the Equity Council and the work that's happening across the community around equity right now. And one of the questions I, I often hear around equity is this idea that we have to give every kid the same thing. And when in many, when I was working in Minneapolis, we often talked about the difference between equal, every kid getting the same thing, and equity, which is every student getting what they need. So my quick example of this is if we had a student that needed glasses, we would want to make sure that that student gets glasses, but we don't buy glasses for every student because not every student needs that. And so how do we develop sort of the portfolio of learning opportunities that can meet different kinds of learners' needs? And that's really what I think is the opportunity in the microschool model. Oh, one more thing because it's super important. In the model that we're building, because it would be led by the district and students will be BVSD students, the placement, the access to this will be open to all members of the community, but students will be within microschools based on the demographic makeup of their school or neighborhood community. We'll talk more, more about that in a moment. So first, that we're seeking to answer through the model, I always think it's important that when we start off at the beginning of something that we, we're like, what are the, what are the questions we're hoping we answer by the end of this? And there's a bunch of them, this is probably 50%, but I wanted to give you a taste of the kinds of questions that we want to answer this year through this model. So does a smaller learning environment work better for some students? Our hypothesis would be yes, some students will blossom in a small environment where they may otherwise feel stagnant in a classroom. And yet we know a bigger classroom works for other kids better than a small environment. So we're really testing, like, what kids does this seem to work well for? Does a microschool promote our social-emotional skills differently? So our SEL skills, to be able to test that. And then are students more likely to be more motivated or inspired, better advocates for their own learning, capable of setting goals, autonomous and self-directed in their learning? And then testing this question of master-based learning, that's actually free teaching and allow different kinds of approaches to learning, does it produce equal or better academic outcomes? That would be super important. We want to make sure we're at least getting equal, if not better, academic outcomes through the model. And then create efficiencies in terms of time, which is a really interesting dynamic that is unfolding as we rethink schools, this question of time. And then figuring out the right staffing and facilitation, what are the right skills that are necessary to effectively staff and lead the microschools? And of course, this question of can we recover enrollment, both in the short term and long term, with a different approach to learning? Would there be families that would say, this kind of model is exactly what I hope, I think my child needs and I would be interested in coming back into BVSD or coming into BVSD to participate in that? So high level, a little bit of a drive-by, but I want to just give you a picture. Our plan is to launch 10 of these small microschools across the district geography. So I basically looked at the student count from last October and then sort of parsed out where those microschools will be located. Now, assuming things work well and we're able, the quality of what's going on in the microschools is high, there's something that says we couldn't add more down the road, but this is where we want to start because we also don't want to overwhelm the process. And there's a lot of detail in figuring out how to launch these well. So mixed age, third through fifth grades students are eligible, and the reason for third through fifth grade is recognizing that K through two will be going back in person. This is another option for third through fifth grade families who might want to be in person, but in person in a smaller kind of a learning group. Again, the student composition, so how students would come into the microschool will match the demographics of the school neighborhood. And our hope is to leverage available classroom space. So we're at the beginning of this piece, but a classroom here or there, sometimes the edge of a, the end, you know, a part of a library space has been used, a teacher lounge has been used in cases, or a community organization that could be proximate to that neighborhood is another potential space option. So we'll be working in the upcoming days with our principles across the district to figure out where, where space might work best. Everything that happens inside the microschool and, and the aims and the outcomes are aligned with BVSD and Colorado standards, but the approach for getting there is different. So it's like a different path to getting to the outcome. So the curriculum will not be exactly what teachers in third through fifth grade are teaching, but the outcomes will be the same and will be measured in a similar way. And then finally, I wanted to mention that I did a fair amount of research on different microschools and different online competency-based learning programs. And my decision to partner with Prenda, which is an Arizona-based organization, was really because beyond just providing the template and the technology, they, they really are, they're really, they have an approach that's around forming and shaping community. So they will be involved in screening, training and supporting our learning guides and providing mentorship to learning guides throughout the course of the year. They've, they've launched hundreds of these in the past and they have a lot of experience with the qualities that really work in a learning guide to help ensure students are happy and do well in this community. They also really care a lot about equity. We've had lots of conversations about this and wanting to create access for kids who want to have this choice. So that was one of our, our conversations. And very few organizations are partnering with districts at this point, and they were excited about the opportunity to do that and to explore a partnership. So that was part of, happy to go into more of that, that was the reason I picked that organization. So super high level, we have a very ambitious timeline because our hope is to launch September 28th. So this, we posted, we posted a job description for learning guides and we're hoping to recruit and interview this week, potentially even hire those that it makes sense to hire within the week, at the end of the week or early next week. We're going to be looking to identify principals in schools or facility locations quickly in the next few days. And then also we'll be sharing this opportunity with families, first through a written communication, but then through virtual information sessions and early next week, some in-person learning sessions, information sessions. And then there's a chunk of time set up for learning guide training and, and solidifying facility conversations next week. And then the GPS session ideally is on Friday, next Friday, which stands for guide, parent, student. So that's where the guide, the parent and the student all sit down and talk about their goals for the year and what they hope to achieve by virtue of being a part of this. And then if all the stars align, we launch the week of September 28th. So there's obviously market conditions that we're taking into consideration in terms of, of interest and facilities and finding the right learning guides. All of those pieces have to line up, but this is, this is what as a team we're shooting for. And I just want to say thanks to district leadership who have been amazing in trying to, to push forward as quickly as possible. So I look forward to your questions.
Okay, Richard?
That's a lot. Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, I know, I went fast.
I went, I went quickly to the Prenda site.
Okay.
And I'm looking at, I guess my first question is how much is this going to cost?
Yeah, so we're trying, what?
That learning guides are compensated. They're going to be, they're not going to be our teachers, right? They're going to be, or they could be probably, I don't know.
So it's interesting, the, the organization is actually composed of teachers, all teachers, who really just desire the different, different way, all of them have been learning guides, but a different approach to learning. So, but the learning guide role does not necessarily require a certified teacher. In the structure that we're designing, they will, the learning guides will report to a certified teacher and that teacher will have responsibility for ensuring academic progress toward our outcomes in the model. But it doesn't require, it doesn't require a certified teacher to run the microschool day-to-day. That said, we are looking first to, to identify internal staff who might be interested and, and then, you know, if we're not able to find them, we'll look outside of the organization. But I, the, the cost of But I, the cost of the students participating, which includes the screening, the training, the support for the learning guides, you know, helping to lead the information sessions and guide the process with us, is about $100 per student per month. And when we talked about whether or not we could do this all internally, the question was just how long it would take us to try and stand this up from scratch versus having a partner that could help us get started. And then, they, of course, have the platform. And if we paid more, we could, they also provide technology. So, that's a question we're still sorting out, but assuming students have devices, if they don't have devices, we will get them devices as part of this process. But Prenda typically provides devices to students if they don't have them to be able to work online.
So, you'll be identifying some partners then shortly in terms of who's going to be able to help with this?
Yes.
Are they community partners that you're talking, that you're thinking about?
Yeah, so part of it is really trying to reach out to stakeholder groups to understand a little bit more about needs, which has been going on throughout the two-plus task force, also in a variety of other ways, what families need. And we know that there's still a desire for some in-person learning, a desire for a bit more, a bit less screen time, a little more flexibility in how the technology and the learning works. But in terms of community partnerships, you know, my projection would be that we first get them off the ground, that we begin those conversations with community partners. But I would say probably within a month or so, depending on the nature of the partnership, we'll want to reach out to help garner their support, depending on the partner.
So, the 10, the 10 micro schools, do you have areas already identified for the 10?
Roughly geographically, yes. So, that's what I was saying. We basically looked at the student count from October of last year. So, it came out to, I believe it's one, two in Lafayette, two in Louisville, one in Broomfield, two in South Boulder, two in North Boulder, and one in East Boulder, if I remember this correctly. I'm open to that geography being different. That was just based on student count. So, I was just looking at where, we were looking at where students were currently learning and how to make sure we were placing them across the geography in an equitable way.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm just thinking that once people learn about this and you're going to have a, probably a rush of people wanting to start their micro schools, but you're only going to have 10, so.
You know, Richard, Emily and I have had this conversation, and if demand exceeds our initial plan, we think that's a good problem to have. Again, you know, trying to stand up an innovation and literally, you know, start to finish in a month, we think it isn't ambitious. Market conditions are going to drive our ability to stand these 10s up, these 10 up. Obviously, recruiting starts next week, getting the information out this week. And so, really excited to see where this innovation and innovative idea takes us. We do feel like that there are, that there are kids that we are tasked to serve who, you know, that this is going to meet their needs in a really, really unique way during this time.
Just another quick question, because you mentioned Lafayette. What if you get a group of, what if you get English language learners, for example, kids that are learning English that want to participate? Are you going to be able to provide some kind of bilingual service for them?
Yes, so in two ways. The learning platforms are all bilingual, so they can learn in Spanish or English. And then, we're all seeking learning guides that are bilingual and that, we probably won't get all bilingual learning guides, but we are going to have a percentage of them, at least stuff that we're aspiring to in the hiring process.
Richard said it. Kathy?
Rob, I hate to rain on your parade, but I am 100% uncomfortable with this. First of all, this is a work session and it seems like something the board should vote on, and this is the first time we're hearing about it. I don't know anything about this Prenda company. When I look it up, it looks like it's a private company out of Arizona where they have a lot of educational savings accounts. This whole thing has blown me away and I don't know what to say. And to think that I don't get a chance to vote on it and I'm supposed to say, during a work session and you're going to start today, can you help me?
I can. I was, I did share this with the board last Friday in our weekly communication. We can certainly have some additional conversations on this. You know, this is a work session, so certainly open to the conversation. I think the problem that we're trying to solve is to create an opportunity for those families, right, that right now, we aren't serving. You know, we have many of our families that have opted out of what it is that we're providing. And so, I believe that that was the innovation that this is trying to solve. If there are additional questions in regards to the partner that we've selected, we can certainly, we can speak to that or we can have a conversation about that. Why don't we have all of our board members weigh in and then we can have a conversation on how we would proceed? Obviously, we haven't done anything up to this point, but share the idea with you and attempt to work on what we think is an innovation. So, why don't we, I hear your concerns, Kathy. It sounds like you need more information and you're really uncomfortable at this point. I would love to hear from the rest of the board and then.
Yeah, I think, Rob, to say that this is, that I don't think that it's being completely above board because the timeline we were given shows that you want this to start tomorrow. So, I don't know how any of this works. I'm feeling lots of mixed information coming. I don't know how this works for SED. I'm uncomfortable having what are called Prenda facilitators instead of teachers. I mean, this whole thing just feels, I don't want to get in the way of something that could be an innovation, but I also just feel like for our public to be hearing this for the first time tonight at a work session for, is, yes, I am 100% uncomfortable with this right now, but if you want to move on, that's fine.
Well, let's hear from the rest of the board members. I appreciate your honesty. Certainly, the last thing I want to do is to move forward on something that the board is uncomfortable. I think that, you know, we do have, I do feel this obligation to try to move fast and try to continue to solve problems. But why don't we hear from the rest of the board and decide together as a team how we want to move forward?
Yeah, like just one more thing, and just looking at the slide, the mass demographics of the school neighborhood in South Boulder, that's going to be mostly white, upper-middle-class kids in a micro school, which I do not think is where we want to head. So, there might be some demographic mixing out in Lafayette and, I mean, it just, I don't even know what to say, Rob. I'll be quiet.
Can I make just two quick, a couple of quick points just, Rob, and then, is that right, Dr. Anderson? Just because I think.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
So, first of all, I just want to, I want to just clarify that this is a BVSD initiative. So, we're hiring BVSD staff and the engine behind it is BVSD. Prenda is just, it's a service provider, so it's not dissimilar from the district purchasing textbooks from a private company or by ACT. There's many vendors that the district uses to support the learning program for students across the system. This is not being run by Prenda. We're merely using a platform that they're learning on. But the platform is combined of tools like Khan Academy, Dreambox, some of which are probably already being used in some capacity. So, the platform is a combination of tools that districts are already using in different capacities. It's not a Prenda-specific thing. So, the Prenda is really just supporting us in getting the micro school up and going and not that, again, that we couldn't do it on our own. I think that's a possibility, but I think it would take longer. They just have expertise in getting these going in other places.
Okay, Donna?
I have some concerns in that, I spoke with some teachers about it today and they were, how would this be fair to all students? And I think parents that are going to see this model, parents are looking to place their students somewhere in group settings. And so, they're, I'm thinking of a particular email that we got from a parent saying that their child was reading to a registrar and was upset by that. And parents want the trained licensed teachers, and so, I'm concerned where it talked about facilitators. And I, when I was Director of Special Education for Dakota Ridge Academy, we had a program that worked really well, but, and it was kind of almost like a little micro school that we developed using the STAR reading and math programs. And it did work well for kids, but I think what our parents are looking for is a place for their children to be, and that's all the emails we're receiving from parents, not necessarily looking for a micro school, but so there's so many questions that I have as I went through the slides today. And Emily, I appreciate innovation and I appreciate, you know, us looking outside of the box, like what else can we do? But it's not going to, at this point, it might mean it needs of 100 families, but that's out of, or 100 kids, not 100 families, out of 30-plus thousand kids. So, I'm, there's just so many questions I have to be able to say, yeah, this looks great, go with it. I don't think that's the question tonight. I guess the information is a start. Anyway, yeah, I have a lot of questions. Thanks.
Yeah, and, oh, do you want me to address any of those or no?
I was just going to go through the board members and maybe we can address them at the end or something.
I'll see if I can take, yeah, I'll take notes.
Okay, Kitty?
Yeah, this sort of, when I read it on News and Notes, kind of caught me off guard. I'm not opposed to it, but I do have a lot of questions about it. And I agree with Kathy that I think we need to vote on this because this is something vastly different from anything we've ever done. I'm intrigued by the idea. I have questions, so it says we're not going to be doing the same curriculum, but we'll be meeting the standards. So, what happens when we go back to Phase Five eventually? What are the kids going to not be in the same place with their peers who are not in the micro school? And this, the $100 per student, is that what we're paying to Prenda? And then, I was concerned about hiring more people and where that money's coming from. You know, it would be great to see these jobs go to people who already work for us. Yeah, I just have a lot more questions. I mean, I don't even know how to articulate right now all of the things that may come up. I mean, I'm not opposed to the idea of this and I'm certainly not opposed to innovation, but I guess I would want to know a lot more. How are we going to get the kids? Are we, do we advertise? Do we recruit specific kids? Are we going to kids who've already opted out? Yeah, so I probably will have more later, but that's what comes up for me. But I really do think it's something the board should be voting on.
Okay, Lisa?
Emily, it's good to see you. I think as a parent, my initial reaction is that this feels really exciting to me. I would love to have my kid in a school like this. I hear the concerns certainly from my fellow board members. I also feel like when we're talking about a sort of a pilot program, that I'm interested in seeing, you know, how it goes and sort of what kinds of information we have on what's actually happening on the ground and on how it's going forward. So, I'm interested in us moving forward on this generally. I do have some questions about demographics. When you say that, are you talking about racial demographics? Are we also including SED and free and reduced lunch? And are we prioritizing any of those groups over our traditional white student learners who don't have any obstacles in their way? Oh, and that's right, we're not answering now, sorry. And then, my other question is, we had a conversation similar to this before, but when we're talking about some of our neighborhoods where we might have families that need this the most and who are also the most reluctant to engage in it, what kind of outreach work do you imagine doing to get our highest need students into these pods? And to make sure that we're not just recruiting, well, students who can pod elsewhere? And I think that is the goal, right, is that we're trying to find sort of pod replacements for kids who otherwise wouldn't be able to engage in them for one reason or another? Is that correct?
I'll take this, Emily. Yes, Lisa, that, I mean, that's where the conversation really started, right, which is, you know, we have these pods that are developing. We have folks in our community that are opting for options that are not a traditional school experience, right? And so, as Emily and I started to talk and think about what's happening across the country, this idea of micro schools popped up. And as what we would hope it would be a plan towards trying to respond to that and being responsive to our community, you know, obviously, we're going to have to have some more discussion on this, but based on the feedback that we're getting today. I think the intent was, I'm trying to move fast as we're trying to move really fast with everything that it is that we're doing. It could be that we've moved too fast and if that's the case, we can look to slow down. But the idea was that these things were happening in our community already. How can we, you know, maybe reengage some of those families and think about a solution that might meet their needs? That's a bit different than even coming back, you know, four days a week. That may still not meet the needs of some of our families. And so, I think that that was the intent as we started this, and I'll let Emily add anything as well.
Yeah, I think one of the conundrums we talked about was just declining enrollment and kind of the worry about, you know, why families are choosing, in some instances, some families are choosing to leave. And is there a way, given, you know, that trend, to sort of, to address some of those concerns in a learning model that would be engaging for students? And to do it in a way that respects the equity priorities that the district holds? So, I would say it was really that this twofold, how do we become flexible enough as a system to try some things that could be helpful for families and students, learn from them quickly, and grow them if it seems as though it's a solution that could work? But if we don't ever test these things on small scale, then, you know, there's a couple of risks, right? There's a risk that families leave. There's a risk that there's some really exciting and compelling approaches to learning that we never uncover and that we don't end up meeting students' learning needs in a way that we could had we explored a potential path like this. I don't think we're attached to any aspect of what we're doing right now. I think we were just trying to make decisions quickly in a way that could stand up something for families sooner than later. And so, that was sort of the reason for moving quicker.
Well, for me, I think as, you know, as the idea of a small nonprofit, trying things on a small scale and seeing if they work is very appealing to me. But I also appreciate that BVSD is not a small nonprofit and that there are reservations from the rest of my board members. So, I'm happy to go with sort of where a general feeling is taking us, depending on what that looks like. But I do want to say that from my perspective, I think this is really exciting and I'd love to see some pilot program here and some results, and we can talk about whether or not it thinks we work.
Okay, Stacy?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Emily. And I share a lot of the concerns that have already been voiced. One thing, if you could clarify me first, for me first, though, is it appears in the presentation that the initial recruitment would start with those families that have already left BVSD? Is that true?
Yes, so one of the conversations we had was trying to identify families who have exited in the last couple of months. And we're able to find that, we do have that data, and to be able to ask if a learning experience like this might be appealing. So, probably not filling our pods with that, or filling our micro schools, and they are a little different than pods, which I can talk about later. But yes, it is true that we would want to, part of this would be to try and recover some of that enrollment.
Hey, that actually concerns me a lot. We have families that are sticking with us. It doesn't mean that they're pleased with what's going on and that they would, that seems to me to be, that approach I'm not comfortable with. We have families that didn't stick with us, they don't trust us, they've lost. I understand the need to want to get them back, but we have a lot of families that are sticking with us and hoping for a solution to what is going on. And to spend this time and energy. And to spend this time and energy and money to get people who didn't stick with us back doesn't feel right to me. Especially how that will look to our family's solution. That feels wrong to me. So thank you for clarifying that. I had a lot of the same questions as Kitty about what if we go back, hopefully to four days or five days or whatever it is? Obviously, these micro schools would not stop what they're doing and go back to school. So this is, is this something that would be for an entire year? Is it three to five years? Is that, you know, if it's grades three to fives, does that mean that a third grader is in this kind of environment till fifth grade, especially if they're doing different kinds of curriculum? I just, I'm confused about that. I have a lot of questions too. I'm not necessarily opposed, but I have a lot of questions similar to what Kitty has verbalized, but I'm most concerned about that recruitment piece. I understand the need to want to get these families back, I really do. It's sad that they left. I don't agree with the fact that they left, but everyone does what's right for their own family and I understand that. But to discount those families that are sticking with us initially really does not feel right to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. And just as a comment, you know, certainly, this would not be an effort that would be taking away from current efforts to try to get back to in-person learning. I think that, and I hear your comments, you know, this is just obligation that I think that I feel as superintendent to think about the different types of options that we can have for today and tomorrow. I think about our families that have immunocompromised students, immunocompromised parents, the risks, the high-risk categories that some of our families are in, the ability to be in some of a smaller type of an environment. I think our intent was, you know, we didn't really have an option for them that they had to choose from. So certainly want to make sure, you know, this is not, we want to support each and every family in the Boulder Valley School District. I think, again, this was an approach to try to maybe reach out to some families that have found themselves in a situation they wouldn't have dreamed of, which is, they may not feel safe sending their kid to any school with lots of kids just due to the exposure.
Hey, yeah, I'll just, I have some concerns about the proposal, but I do appreciate the work and the idea of thinking about new ideas to address our conditions that are surrounding us. I think that this is a pretty big shift from some of the values that we have as a district, including the idea that all of our teachers are licensed. And that's been a value we've held for a long time. So this is somewhat of a departure from that. And also, I think that it would take a lot of time to start offering some families very low class sizes and giving other families larger class sizes in order to sort of subsidize this. My sense, just at first glance, is that's going to be a pretty tough proposition to sell. And I think that we have 20 minutes left and I'm wondering if the best thing to do is to set up a different time, because this is a pretty big deal. I also agree that the board would have to vote on this because it changes the teacher licensure requirements and it's also a partnership with a different vendor that's out of state that we haven't used, that I have some concerns about as well. And I think that we would need to have this discussion again in a public setting. And I would probably suggest we do another work session that's longer to talk and then do a public meeting, just because this idea is so new and there are so many different aspects to it that are a shift for our district. And I want to recognize that sometimes shifting is the right thing. It's just that there are some aspects to this proposal that I think are going to require, for me at least, more time to appreciate and to make sure that I think it's the right long-term vision. And whether this is long-term or short-term is very important as well, because it's just a different way of thinking, which could be good, but I think it's going to require a lot more time than September 28th. So I'm wondering if an option is to set up more time or what do you think, Rob? Because I don't think we can really go through this in 20 minutes.
No, no. First of all, board members, I appreciate, I appreciate the dialogue. Emily, I appreciate the work that you put in. It's obvious to me that we need to have more conversations. I think that this idea has to be put on pause until we're able to answer some more of the questions and concerns board members have. I think that we'll continue to try to, you know, solve problems and think differently. I think lesson learned from this is that we need to just dig in a little bit deeper on this idea and get more of a consensus from the board on how we proceed. So for those of you that felt like you were surprised or didn't have the information you needed today, I certainly apologize. That's never my intent. I do have an urgency, I feel, to move fast and to try to solve problems in what is a really, certainly a tough time for a lot of our families and certainly a trying time for many of our folks that are working in the district. So what I would propose, Tina, is let me go back to our team, let me have a conversation, let me connect with all board members throughout the week and then we'll figure out next step.
Can I ask quickly, because Emily didn't get a chance to answer and I was the one that brought up originally the concern about the facilitator and what their qualifications and how teachers might respond to licensing and things like that. And you had said you wanted to start the recruiting and hiring process, so you must have in mind some criteria on a facilitator. Could you just let me know, just so I can sleep tonight? Because several people talked about the licensure after I brought it up and I just wanted to find out, I didn't want to assume that that wasn't a, and so, yeah, can you speak to that for just a second?
Yeah, just a couple of high-level things. So one, it's just for, it's just for a single year. And then the plan was to evaluate at the end of this year what we've learned. So it isn't a forever program. Just as a quick example, my daughter went through first grade Khan Academy in April and May when she was struggling with what she was learning in a remote environment and was able to learn math quickly. I think there are some real advantages to the structure of technology that allows students to directly interface, to directly actively engage with the technology. And the learning outcomes to date are on par, if not better, than a lot of what happens in a classroom environment where you cover content for a period of time irrespective of whether students already know it or students need more intervention and help. And that's not the fault of the teacher. We have amazing teachers that are doing the best they can to differentiate in classrooms. But the complexity of differentiating across the vast student needs that exist in our classrooms is significant. And so figuring out how to leverage a technology in our favor to actually use the teacher to do the thing they're best equipped to do is what the model is designed around. So when teachers are freed up to focus on supporting kids who might be stuck on a certain concept, we think of that generally as an advantage, that instead of those kids, you know, deepening cracks in their understanding or their knowledge of something, we actually shore those up quickly so that they continue learning with their peer group. So in terms of hiring, the idea is that we would have learning facilitators who report to a certified teacher. And the job of the certified teacher would be to ensure that academic learning outcomes are being met on a routine basis throughout the course of the school year. So if something happens where students are falling behind or they're not, it would be the licensed teacher who is helping to intervene with that learning guide. But part of what we think is really important in the guiding is a loving adult who cares about the student, who's worked with students and taught before, and who understands this age band of kids from a developmental standpoint, and is willing to support students in becoming autonomous learners, agents of their own learning. And so that's part of how we're thinking about the role of the guide and kind of the support to the connection between a classroom teacher, a more traditional classroom teacher and a learning guide. Does that answer your question?
Pretty much, yeah. That answers that one as far as the qualifications. Thank you.
Okay. So board members, are you okay just taking, knowing that we can't really get everything we need in 15 minutes, sort of ending now and then we'll kind of loop back with Rob? Is that okay with everyone?
And just to be clear, the district will take no action on this, board members, until we would talk with you all. And then in the event that we feel like that there's some merit to this idea or we can make some adjustments that folks are comfortable with, then we would bring it back. So, you know, I just want to be really clear on that, that by, you know, making this decision then, that we've hit the pause button officially on this, so.
Well, and Rob, it's not just us, but our community needs to have some time to digest this and learn about it. And apparently, the community that's not our community anymore needs to learn about it. So I think it's not just us that we need to be paying attention to.
So this will be on next Tuesday's presentation on update?
Let me connect with you all and we'll see where we're headed with this.
Can I say just a
Yeah, Richard.
A quick comment. One is that I believe I asked at the last board meeting what would happen with some of the kids that are behind and are falling behind. And I mentioned, I used the word gap kids and was drenched over the cold by somebody about using the word gap. But anyway, that's, the kids that are behind, and I'm really concerned about our three, four, five-year-olds, especially here in the Lafayette area, that are not going to have in-person. And the response I got when I asked the question is that they're going to use MTSS or something like that to see if some of these particular kids would be able to get in-person learning. I'm talking about the kids that are not your sped kids, that are going to get in-person learning. And I'm thinking that these micro, this micro school concept could be an answer to some of these particular dilemmas that we're facing right now for these particular children. And in Lafayette, let me tell you, I have a lot of Latino families in Lafayette that are very, very concerned about their kids that are not in-person because they're behind and they're falling behind. And I don't think that we can afford to wait much longer in terms of what we're going to do to help these particular kids that are behind and falling behind. So that's just a comment that I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments to close?
I guess I just, if I could just say one thing, I want to be clear that the commitment that the district, from the district, is really to serve a percentage of all students. So it's not just trying to recover enrollment, though that's part of it, but it really is an outreach to sections of the community where we think students' needs aren't being met. And that's very much the energy behind the idea. And I'm happy to send out information in a way that many of the questions that surfaced we've discussed, but I recognize probably need more time for discussion and digestion, so.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right. So we will hear more and we'll see what happens. And with that, is it okay if I end the meeting? I think that's all we've got. All right. Well, thank you so much. Thanks for all your work and I'll see you all next Tuesday.